You trying to get me in trouble now? Welcome to Lamoore City Council. It's 5:30, month January, day fifteen, year 2019. Address 429 C Street. Please silence all electronic devices, thank you. Public comment? I see there's none. We're gonna go ahead and go into 5:30 study session, SS dash one. City Council, can you please go to page four on that Adventist Health Community and Excellence Program, Osen?
Good evening Mayor and Council members. Tonight we have Nina Plata from Adventist Health here to present an overview on the Communities of Excellence programs. I'll turn it over to Nina.
So I'm not sure if I move this down like this.
You can.
Okay, well, number one, thank you for the invite and letting us come to speak with you tonight. This is Julie Laffitte, who's also my partner, and Julie is over and runs KPFP, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. They are, do you want to tell them a little bit?
Like she said, my name is Julie Laffitte, so I have the absolute privilege of running King's Partnership for Prevention. We're a 501(c)(3), located here in Kings County, funded primarily by Behavioral Health, Public Health, and Adventist Health. And the idea of this nonprofit coalition is to bring together all of our service providers primarily, to work on common goals and reducing health disparities across the board. So when this project came forward, we were excited to be part of it.
And we hope you're the same, too. Alright, so let me tell you a little bit about the history of this, and then I'll walk you through this slide. These slides here, there's two sets of PowerPoints, will be quick. And the reason being is that you'll, this is kind of to introduce you to Malcolm Baldridge. I know that some of you last year participated, I think Nathan, did you come to the hospital? We had a Someone Speak on Strategy, which was, I thought it was really good. And so Malcolm Baldridge is about leadership and leadership education. And so we want to bring this to everyone. I am over Population Health for the whole Central Valley. And so what I'm doing is working on creating a healthy continuum of care, which is birth to death. And in other words, instead of going to ER and the doctors to take care of problems, my goal is we prevent it so you're not even there, okay? So we're looking at annual wellness visits, we're looking at having conversations in a different way, and partnering more with our physicians and our community. So when this opportunity came around, we were at a Malcolm Baldridge Award banquet, and we earned an award, our CEO did. They presented this new framework, which is called Communities of Excellence. And the 2026 stands for our 250th anniversary. So of our country. So the goal with this framework is this really creates an excellent community. And to do this, we need you, okay? And that's why we're here today, to get your partnership with us. And so when we started figuring out, what I did is I pulled a group together, and our group has actually grown this year from last year. And when we picked who we're gonna do this with, we first said, oh, Kings County. Well, that's huge, if you count Corcoran and you count Avenal, it's enormous. So we started out with Lamoore and Hanford, and we have a group, we have someone who's with La Prino Foods. Ray Madrigal has been a big part of this. We also have Julie, we have Health and Human Services, we have Behavioral Health, we have Public Health. So the idea is that if we work together, we can really take our monies and our power and our community, and really work together on goals and make costs less because we're doing the same thing, we're not duplicating services. And that's what our goal is with this Communities of Excellence. Okay, so I'm gonna walk through real quick, just as we developed this, and then I'm gonna let Julie show you what our last project was for when our first year ended, okay? So what this is, is a systematic approach to community performance using criteria for performance excellence based on Baldridge Excellence Framework. So the framework, if you look at it, it looks at what's your profile? What is your leadership? What is your strategic plan? And who is your customer? Our customers are community, okay? So what we want to do is, we want to align our entire community so we have common goals and we're working towards the same goal, okay? And that's, I'm sure, your goal, too, okay? So Malcolm Baldridge, in the eighties, worked on Ronald Reagan's cabinet. I'm not sure if you're familiar with who he is. And during this time, Toyota was really starting to do better than the American car industry. And, you know, Toyota and Datsun was coming around at that time.
Now it's Nissan, yeah.
And guess what? They, we started, we were losing money. So what we needed to do is figure out why. Well, what Malcolm Baldridge did is he figured out, and does anyone here know what lean principles are? So lean principles are, you know, let's say you have an assembly line? You figure out the same way, and you cut out all the extra different steps. So that's, you standardize your approach to work. And that's what Toyota had done, and that's why things were in, you know, excellent condition when they came out, and they had better maintenance records and so on. So what Malcolm Baldridge did is he put together an application for businesses so every single process and service surrounding them, meaning all their stakeholders, their employees, their customers, they did a better job in their approach towards business, strategic planning, and the end result, which is metrics, how you get there, okay? And I, you guys have this, right? You can read it, you can read about him on the internet. Okay, so who is working on this? Currently, we have a, we're here today to bring you into our advisory board. We would like to come probably twice a year to talk to you about where we are in the process, and the award, in writing for our framework. So we would like you to be part of our advisory board. Currently, we have a steering committee, and that is on the right-hand side, the list of our steering committee. We do have a couple changes. Actually, we had seven new people join this year. And which is, someone's even joined from Tulare County, interested in wooing Adventist Health to come and bring them into this also. We also want to work on bringing our community partners, and we call them our friends, into this whole project because if we can have them help us set our strategy and our goals, we'll just, we'll win, okay? And so on the right-hand side, you see Ed Hill, and he actually, there's a brand-new nurse who's the head of Public Health, Nicole, she just started. She is taking over Ed's position, and I can't even see all her names. Oh, Lisa Lewis, and Lisa Lewis does not come too much. But if you look down, many of these people you do know. We do have quite a few from Adventist Health, but most of them are there to kind of lead the project. We have someone who's in charge, for example, of mission integration. Andrew Cromwell has been a really fantastic member, he's on our writing team. And actually, Ray is on our writing team, so he's been really helpful to us. Okay, so our journey so far is we've put, we've looked at strategic planning, and you're gonna, we're gonna go over that next. We've also looked at leadership and key award writing, winning leaders. So some of the leaders in the past year, we belong to a cohort right now with six other cities. One of them is San Diego County. We have two cities in Missouri. We have a city from West Virginia. We have Toledo, Ohio. We have Florida. And so we would like Kings County to be like in the bleeding forefront of being a Communities of Excellence. And so, and then also, some of the, another thing is bringing the community together. Okay, can you? Alright, I'm gonna let, move on to the next PowerPoint, if that's okay? And I'm gonna let you know mission values in that one. So can we switch PowerPoints? Sorry.
Well, I'm actually, while we're getting the PowerPoint switch, I want to give you a little bit more of the information of exactly what excited me about this process. So at King's Partnership for Prevention, we're all about bringing people together. The idea is that we can only do in a small county. We have limited time, limited resources. But when we work together, we're actually able to service the individual, to be able to serve, excuse me, the individual in a way that we couldn't by ourselves. The idea is that if someone, the same person, when I say that we target service providers, the same person that walks in the door to the emergency room at Adventist is probably one of the same people that walks in the door of Health and Human Services, Human Service Agency. Same person that might walk in the door at Champion, same person that's gonna be sitting in the pews at Quinones Church. We're serving the same people. My analogy is always, we are, we are building a sandcastle, and instead of knocking down the sandcastle that someone else builds, why not build a bigger one? Because we're build, we're working with the same sand. And that's really where this comes from. That's where this idea and this power of working together is important. But what we miss in King's Partnership for Prevention, we, we really are looking at the service providers. And I can get the service providers together, and they are working together incredibly. But what we are missing, two things. One, it's not necessarily in the DNA. We're holding hands, we're getting to know each other, we're pushing things forward. But are we actually working on the same exact strategic plan and initiatives across the way? Not necessarily. That's where this changes it. And then on the other side is the business sector involved, or different parts of the community involved. Because again, we're all working with the same people. No, not necessarily. This changes that. This is a powerful infrastructure, and the fact that we've been able to, we've been coached by individuals who have done this across the country. Our mentor right now is the president of the Advancement for Performance Excellence, Brian Lassiter, who has been in Baldridge for 27 years. I mean, these people are incredible. So I feel very honored to be part of this and be moving this forward for Kings County. So that gives you a little bit of why we were so thrilled to get involved. So let me show you what we've done, really briefly. Our mission, this is our Community Enhancement, our Community of Excellence group that we've been talking to you about, and we have come up with the name Flourish Kings County. So hopefully, this is what's gonna drive us moving forward. To enhance the quality of life in Kings County by creating a collaborative community that focuses on health, family, education, financial stability. This is something that we feel like everyone can look at, and feel like these pillars are pillars of a community. If you don't have health, mental, physical, spiritual, emotional, you therefore can't have one of these other things. Financial stability can only come when your people are healthy. Family can only be prosperous when you're getting the education and the health that you need. All of these things work together to create pillars, and they're so important for a community to thrive. Building a vibrant Kings County where future generations flourish. In our process, we really loved the name Flourish. We loved Thrive, we love things like that, that it's not just that we're doing a good thing. It's not just that we're managing, it's that we are pushing things forward and moving to a point that we never thought we could be. And that's surpassing the potential, that's flourishing. There we go. Values. We've actually changed these a little bit, not because these were bad ones, but because we realized Baldridge, if you haven't ever played with this before, played, that's a weird word, but Baldridge has a very specific way of saying things because, again, this is a rubric that is tried and true. So we really like to follow their flow, but these are still, obviously, incredible values. Tradition, respect, community, wellness, safety, teamwork, growth, environment, excellence. Our goals, as we move forward, and these are in draft format still, but this shows you exactly. Actually, some of these we're moving forward with right now. Create a collaborative community that drives the enhancement of quality of life in Kings County. Enhance awareness and support of social determinants of health to create a healthier Kings County. If you haven't ever heard the term "social determinants of health," I want to take a brief second to explain that to you. When you look at the physical health of an individual, most likely, if a student is coming into school without pencil, not prepared for class, acting out, normally, there are different things happening in the life of that individual. It's not necessarily that something's wrong with the child, it's that something has happened in the life of that child to challenge that child's resilience. So what that means, that's where social determinants of health come in. Where's that child living? What's that child's family life like? What is that child doing after school? Who's taking care of that child? These are different things. What is that child eating? What is that child, do you say? So those are the social determinants. So it's affecting the physical health, the mental health, then, the everything. But it's coming from an environment. And so that's where we really want to look at the social determinants of health. We want to create an education-focused culture. We want to create an environment that sustains economic growth and innovation, I love that word, for new business within the community in order to provide services and enhance the quality of life for all residents. Someone that also has been added to our team is Lance Lippincott, who is the new director of the Job Training Office, too, which we're very excited specifically, obviously, on the financial stability piece of this. Action plans. Establish common goals with Kings County community members, that's our short-term one. Coordinate efforts with healthcare, county health services, and community to support the underserved, obviously more long-term. To bring schools together, to discuss how, to discuss how to discuss, excuse us, and address third-grade reading, high school graduation, and college degree attainment. Align business and community goals with secondary and post-secondary job education and training. If you look back really quickly at, I'm gonna go back to that mission, we want to break things down in each of these categories. So when you saw the goals, you saw things getting broken down in each of these categories to make it step-by-step more attainable. Steering Committee, our structure, as Nina had said, Steering Committee, Advisory Board, and our community, which we want to have partners and friends, so that's businesses and individuals. And from the community, we want to get feedback. The ideas between the Steering Committee and the Advisory Board will present and discuss action plan metrics with the power to suggest change based on community need. To establish what the financial need is, once this is established, the Advisory Board will discuss and decide funding. And we want the community friends to be asked to review, give input, and recommend change to any action plan. Obviously, we have challenges, whether that's, we have, if you want to take a look at our website, and I'm gonna promote it here for just one second, you can see all of our disparities. So when I said that KPFP is here to try to reduce health disparities and health inequities in Kings County, take a look at it. Go to kpfp.org, you can find our Socio Needs Index. You're gonna be able to see exactly what that means. And that takes education, that takes all of the things I talked about with the social determinants of health, and puts it together to create a need-based community. And you're gonna be able to see exactly, we have all the data on our website, we can paint the picture for you. Everything from food insecurity to diabetes rate to down to zip code. So take a look at Lamoore, take a look at census tracts, really fascinating stuff. But that's gonna really paint the picture on, obviously, what our challenges are here. But you know what? So much good is happening. So much good is happening right here in Lamoore, right here in Hanford, right here in Kings County. So we look at those disparities, and you look at them, and you get a little, okay, this is a lot to accomplish. But baby steps, we're making it, you guys are doing it, one step at a time. Metrics. Establish a method to capture, capture change in community using census data and supported by all of these things. So we have the Community Health Needs Assessment, Emergency Room Use, Community Health School Testing, Poverty Level, Crime Rate, Suicide Rate. A lot of these things are readily available, and some of them we will be working on gathering. This gives you a little bit more information on our logo. Flourish, a verb, to grow and develop in a healthy or vigorous way, especially as a result of a particularly favorable environment. Hence why we loved the word. And that's the end of us.
Oh, she wants to have one more thing. So the idea is that we don't, I would say, need any work from you. What we need is your support. And the idea is that with our strategic planning, is that we come up with what we do well together and not look at negative things, if that makes sense. And I'm not saying you are looking at negative things. But the idea is, when we were looking at Kings County, we were looking at multi-generational families here. Many of these families are Christian, and many families are in farming and ag. And so those are some of our common things, and we really have some great competencies here within the valley. And so the idea is, as we come together, we come together with something special that is, I would say signifies Kings County. And that's what we want, is you to think about that, and think about what we can glean from you and your experience and add it to our Communities of Excellence. And thank you. Do you have any questions?
Could you repeat the website?
Thank you, I'm really excited that you want the website. kpfp.org, and it stands for King's Partnership for Prevention.
And you can use it for your metrics, I use it quite often.
Grab any graph, you literally, all the graphs grabbable, it's fabulous.
Write your reports for that.
Exactly. Some are very lagging, but just like I'm sure many of yours are.
I had a, I had a question, actually, two questions. One was, you mentioned you had partnered in Tulare, and I just wanted to know who that might be?
His first name is Sahari.
Oh, so it's not, is it not an entity?
Health and Human Services.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, you mentioned all of this data that you have, and I'm just curious to know where you collect your data from, and, and who it is that determines their validity as a use in their metric?
Really good question. So if you hop on kpfp.org, all of the data is publicly sourced data, but it's readily available. So the only data that we have that's locally been added to our site is our GOT Needs Survey. Our GOT Needs Survey was established in 2017, partnering with all of the organizations that I mentioned that are a part of King's Partnership for Prevention, and randomly sampling 10% of individuals that walk into their door. So for instance, for six weeks this year, we'll be doing it again in 2019, everyone that walks in, and the doors of Quinones during their food bank, whether that's Champion's, whether that's Human Service Agency, 10% of those people get asked to do a survey if they have not done it before. Everything else is publicly sourced. So everything else is going to say on it exactly where it came from and click you back to the source. So that's where, obviously, it's every, it's, there's lots of different sources on there. I believe there's about 32 different publicly sourced data that they pull from, and it'll link you back to it. But as far as our survey goes, I want to just tell you why I love it, is because that provides perception. So for instance, to give you an example, I can look at the data right now, and I can tell you that 80% of people in Kings County are pre-obese or obese. I can tell you that. That's, that's information that I can pull from health records, and I can show you where I, where we got that, and we know that information. What I can't tell you is why. And, but what this survey tells you in the GOT Needs is something like the question of why, what, what are your barriers to eating healthy? And so for 10% of the people that walk in the door, get asked the question, what are your barriers to eating healthy? And there's an option of like 15 options. Everything from, I can't access it, I can't access healthy food, healthy food goes bad too early, I don't know how to cook healthy food, my family doesn't like healthy food, I don't like healthy food. It gives an example of what healthy food is to make sure everyone's on the same playing field. What do you think the number-one answer to that question was? 80% of people in Kings County are pre-obese or obese, and the number-one answer to that, ranging at over 80% of people again, say they already eat healthy food. So obviously, we have a perception issue. The reason that's a big deal is because, obviously, I can offer all the nutrition classes I want to offer, but if people don't think they need to go to them, that's a problem. So that's why getting data in lots of different forms, looking not only at the facts but perception, enables us to actually address the issues in the way the individual needs them addressed. So that's why I love the GOT Needs Survey, because it really layers the data that you normally see with actual human data, human perception, which makes it really beautiful. So those are our main sources of data.
If you guys will permit, I have a follow-up based on that, is that alright?
Yeah, go ahead.
That brings up a follow-up question. You mentioned that they're all publicly sourced data, so are you using any peer-reviewed sources that require a subscription service, or all of your sources then readily available to anyone if they click on it online for free?
Everything is readily available if you click on it online for three, for, for three, for free. This is maintained, and I should have told you this, by Healthy Communities Institute. Healthy Communities Institute is a, is a partnership that's done through Berkeley. And they are, they, the idea of doing this is to, again, bring publicly sourced data, and so that everyone's looking at the same picture, bring it to an accessible format. So instead of me going to all of those 30 sources, all I have to do is go on the KPFP website and type in smoking. And lung cancer rates, COPD rates, smoking rates, youth, everything that we have that's publicly sourced on smoking pops up. And then I can actually run a report on it right then. So it's all accessible to anyone. No one need to, to put data onto it, obviously, that's on the backend. But as far as what's there, accessible to everyone, click through the source, everyone, this, we want everyone's hands on it to really be able to paint the picture of what's here.
Okay, I have a question. Are you guys familiar with KCIO? Okay, have you guys reached out to them? Because you guys sound similar to them, but only thing, you guys are real good with the health situation.
Yeah, so King's Community Action Organization is also part of KPFP, a huge part. She, Glenda Stevens, actually, who's the director, sits on our board. And they actually are the ones that brought the concept of the Community Needs Assessment. So that's something, as the anti-poverty agency here in Kings County, KCIO is, they're the ones that brought that to us because they are required to do a needs assessment. And they, and they had the idea of, if we work together, we can make this bigger and better. And so that's what brought this in 2017. They were doing one, but it was mainly their clientele, and so we were missing part of the picture. So by working together, we're able to capture a lot more than we were before. So they're a huge, huge partner, thank you.
Thank you. Guess that got it. I really appreciate it, nice presentation. I'm sure we're gonna get back with you guys. God bless.
The most about six months.
Six months, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Would now be a time to voice our opinion of where the council feels towards this, or are we just? Are we looking for direction for the council, from the council?
I don't think so, I think this was just a study. I don't think this item is designed for direction, I think it's just a informational item.
Study session, yeah.
It's a stem, informational item, and then if you want to make comments, probably the council comments would be the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going into closed session. One, liability claims, Government Code, Section 54956.95, Ms. Laura Dunan. Two, conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigations, Government Code, Section 54956.9, significant exposure litigations pursuant on paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 54956.9, two cases. Three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigations, Government Code, Section 54956.9. Initiate, initiate, initiation of litigations pursuant in paragraph four of subdivision D of section 54956.9, deciding whether to initiate, to initiate litigations, one case. Okay, that'd be about it. We're gonna go ahead and go into closed session on these items. I see, do we have anybody in the public want to speak on any closed sessions? I see there's none. The time is three minutes to six. Going into closed session, adjourn. Welcome to Lamoore City Council. Put this mic on. Welcome to Lamoore City Council. It is January 15, 2019, 7:30 regular meeting. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Pastor Ash.
Let us all bow our heads and close our eyes for a moment of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we pray for your blessing this evening. Father, Lord, we pray for your timing and your will for the city of Lamoore. Father, Lord, I pray for an anointing upon this council that is before us, Father, to be used by you for what is best for your people and what is in line with your will. Your will, your timing, this is what we pray for, and this is what we ask for, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people, say.
Amen. We're gonna have our city attorney report on closed session.
Actually, I'm gonna have, if council will agree with me, I'm gonna have the city clerk do roll call first.
Thank you. Jamie?
Councilmember Blair?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Billingsley?
Here.
Mayor Neal?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna go to, go ahead.
We're gonna, we have one action to report out of closed session. On a motion by Councilmember Lyons, seconded by Councilmember Brown, on a vote of four to zero with Councilwoman Holly Blair absent. The council has decided to initiate an action for a temporary restraining order against Holly Blair.
Thank you.
Okay, Dee, we're going to agenda, agenda approval additions or deletions. I see we have none. Public comment? This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items that interest the city. As long as it's not on the agenda, go ahead and speak. Let's go ahead and whoever wants to come up with public comment, come up, we'll give you three minutes. Susan?
Go ahead. Just don't forget about the.
Tom Reed, 1060 Far Avenue, Lamoore. Mayor and councilmembers, are you offended? The only real, real conflict you will have in your life won't be with others, but with yourself. People get addicted to feeling offended all the time because it gives them a high. And being self-righteous and morally superior makes them feel good. Right now, we live in an age of extreme political correctness. It has gone way too far. I hope it's just a phase. Political correctness is now just a fancy word for censorship. It's no longer about protecting the weak. It has become an excuse to persecute others because persecuting people is fun. Don't you dare say or think the wrong thing or a Twitter mob of angry villagers will come after you with digital torches and metaphorical pitchforks. Some people love to feel offended because it makes them feel important. When your only tool is a hammer, suddenly every problem starts to look like a nail. And when the only time you feel relevant is when you claim to be offended, suddenly everything looks offensive. Don't worry about offending people. Anytime you say something thought provoking, someone will complain because they hate it when you make them think. Those who are determined to be offended will discover a provocation somewhere. We cannot possibly adjust enough to please the fanatics and it is degrading to make the attempt. Whenever you speak the truth, someone will be offended.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Suzie?
I just wanted to go on.
Excuse me for a minute. State your name, address.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Suzie Banuelos. I just wanted to go on record and register my embarrassment on behalf of a, as a resident of Lamoore for the actions of a particular council member? Who attended a recent Kalinka City Council meeting and introduced themselves as a council member from Lamoore? And went on to berate a newly sworn in council member at their meeting. And I felt like that was a violation of the censure. I'm, I'm not really up to speed on that. I don't know. But I, as a resident of Lamoore, I was embarrassed. I was humiliated. I don't think that reflects on our city at all very well. I feel like that council member and the city of Kalinka owed an apology at the least. And also I just wanted to say that I think it's very telling that here we are in a new year. We have two new council members. Welcome to both of you. We have a new mayor, but we find ourselves in the same position that we were last year. Same drama and chaos. And I think we can tell where the antics and, and the drama and all of the chaos is coming from. So I just wanted to point that out because the one constant is the source of, I think, the majority of all of our problems. But I thank you all for doing a great job in representing us very well with tact and dignity. Thank you. And I support the vote out of closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy Ward? How you doing?
Hello, Amy Ward, CEO, Lamoore Chamber of Commerce. The 61st Annual Installation Banquet is this Friday. Every year around October, a group of previous citizens of the year meet at the chamber office and begin the job of selecting business organization and citizen of the year. To be honest, it's my favorite meeting of the year. During the meeting, I get to hear all about the amazing businesses, organizations, and citizens that we have here in Lamoore. It is basically one big brag on Lamoore meeting and for the second year, I have left the meeting in awe of how lucky we are as a community. This year, we get to honor sushi table as business of the year. If you do not know Sonny and Fanny Law, you are missing out. Those two have some of the biggest hearts for our community and they give back nearly daily, it seems. We also get to honor the LHS, LHS, FFA Guide Dog Puppy Raising Project. Local high school students spending their free time raising puppies who will become guide dogs for the blind. It's simply incredible. Our citizen of the year is Dr. Ewing, who has been an active volunteer and physician in our community for more years than I can count. When I took over as CEO in 2017, my goal was to constantly celebrate the things that make Lamoore such an amazing community. When I sat down at my desk early on, I knew there was so much more that we could celebrate at our banquets. We have had the, some of the best public safety individuals here in Lamoore. From an all-volunteer fire department to our world-class LPD, Lamoore is lucky. So I brought in a fourth award because I'm a firm believer that if we do not celebrate how lucky we are, nobody else will. Last year, we honored Officer Jason Stevens as our first ever public safety individual of the year. And this year, we will honor Abby Shiamora, who is a volunteer fire department with the Lamoore, or volunteer firefighter with the Lamoore Volunteer Fire Department. There will always be things that we can improve on as a city, but I for one stand here proud of this community. Proud of the businesses and the people who work so hard to make Lamoore what it is. This Friday, we get to celebrate those in the community who make significant impacts daily. The ones who lead by example, not by words. Our businesses and our citizens deserve to be celebrated. Growth is an important part, but I hope that our quest, but I hope that in our quest for growth, we never stop celebrating those who invested their time, talents, and money in Lamoore. Those who understand that Lamoore is not like any other community, nor should we ever strive to be. Thank you to everyone who has already purchased their tickets and will join us in celebration of our city. Thank you to Nathan and your staff for partnering in this event. This event, I'm happy to say, is actually sold out this year already and we're really excited about this event. So thank you, Mayor. I know you will be attending and presenting on behalf of the city and we do appreciate all of the support that we've had. This is gonna be our best yet.
Thank you. And Mrs. Ward, I just wanted to let you know, my apology. CEO, you've been doing a great job since you've been here. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Alright, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you. Tom Reed, 1060 Far Avenue, Lamoore. Someone mentioned to me this morning about Councilmember Blair attending the council meeting in Kalinka. So I went home and did, I found it on the internet and I listened to what she said. She did identify herself as a council member, which she is. She did not say she was representing the city of Lamoore. I do not know what she had posted that caused a response from that Kalinka council member. But if she felt it was negative towards her, it was her right and responsibility to do that. I don't fault her for that. Having said that, if you're gonna throw a little mud, expect some mud to come back at you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else with public comment? Mrs. Vash?
Connie Vashen, 523 C Street in Lamoore. I actually didn't fill out a card because I wasn't gonna say anything, but I do have my paper. I have a question for our city attorney. Has the city met, it's as part of the censure, the reason it was, they started the censure was to protect the city in case lawsuits happened? Like, like we had before where a council member was sued and the city was sued because the city didn't say something. Are we protected now? Is the city, have you guys met the legal requirements of that?
Counsel, do you want me to respond?
Certainly.
The censure is, the censure is a legal document and an argue, and an argument can, would be made that the city doesn't agree with the, the statements that were made as referenced in the censure? That does not prevent the city from getting sued. They would still have to defend themselves.
Really?
It's not automatic.
Oh, okay, that's too bad. Because Ms. Blair, I thought part of the censure was that she could not identify herself as a council member of the city of Lamoore. She can post whatever she wants and say whatever she wants, but she wasn't supposed to identify herself as a council member and of the city of Lamoore. She does it on her Facebook page. She had two outrageous radio interviews last week and they kept saying about Councilmember Blair, Councilmember Blair, city of Lamoore. And I, you know, I wouldn't have listened to it, but she, she identifies herself as a council member. And as a council member, she represents me and she represents you. And her, her statements were outrageous. I mean, they were just outrageous. I know she has a right to speak, but there are consequences to our act, to our speech. It's not free. So I just wanted to figure, how do you guys get her to take her name off of this stuff? And if she's on these radio stations, talk all you want, but don't identify yourself as a council member.
Thank you, Ms. Vash.
Thank you.
Any more pop, public comments? Go ahead, Alicia. Excuse me. Then you. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Ramirez and I'm with Assemblymember Rudy Salas' office. Just wanted to congratulate Councilmember Stuart Lyons and Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Chad Billingsley, Eddie Neal, Councilman Eddie Neal, Mayor, I should say, sir.
Thank you.
I would also like to say that, you know, on behalf of Assemblyman Rudy Salas, you know, I'm here on his behalf. If you guys, if there's anything that we can do, work on, you know, with the city, please let, let us know. I will leave our cards, I'll leave my card here. Please feel free to contact me, contact Damian Douglas, our Assemblyman Rudy Salas. Just wanted to know our team, teamwork. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, give it to the secretary. Any more public comments?
Good evening. Dr. Gail Cromes, NAACP. Just one question really. How many lawsuits? When you look at the, the docket every week, there is some sort of legal action that's being reviewed or going, going, action being taken. How many lawsuits is there actually going on?
I'll switch that hand out off to the city manager or city attorney, one of you.
City attorney, please.
I would have to count them there. So just to clarify, when there's a, when there is a, for example, tonight, there was a threat of litigation. That doesn't mean the lawsuit actually ever gets filed. But there are currently approximately two, I believe, or three, thank you, Madam Clerk, existing lawsuits pending. But that doesn't necessarily mean that more won't come.
And does it involve the city council or does it, or is it just the city itself?
I cannot disclose that. It would be a threat to the city.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comments? I see there's none. Going to ceremony and presentation, section one. No ceremony presentations, okay. Department and city manager report, section two.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So Mr. Frank Rivera, Public Works, has something to report on.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I have a couple of things to report on. Approximately two weeks ago, while doing an inspection of a well, number 10, which is located just west of our CMC facility? The casing got stuck. So that's a possible sign of subsidence. We do not know for sure what the root of the problem is yet, but since then, we, we attempted to, to send a video down to take a look, but the water in the well is too murky. So we're gonna attempt this Thursday to send a video down there, hopefully we can get a clear shot of what the problem is. But the well did get stuck, so we'll report on, on what we find at next council meeting. The next thing is that this Thursday, we'll be going, we'll be posting two projects. One will be the bid for the finance department remodel. And second is that we're going off, we're, we're gonna post for, request for qualifications for a design building for our water treatment project. So those will both be posted on Thursday.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. I have a couple of things to report out. So first of all, council approved in the budget cycle and the city recently reserved our table, a booth at the ICSC down in Vegas from May 19th through the 22nd. We get a 10 by 10 booth. We'll put out some advertisements for the city. With that comes four tickets. So as of right now, we're planning on taking the, the four-member ECTV team down there and we're planning on partnering with John Cashin to help promote the 80 acres we're in. We're also gonna get in contact with our private landowners out on the west side and some in the industrial parks and have them give us portfolios to take down on their behalf to, to talk about those properties. Additionally, I met with the developers for the Kmart building today. They were in town from Buffalo, New York, wanted to meet me. So one of our police officers was there because they tripped the alarm getting into the building. And start, or Officer Rossi called me and asked me if I had time to meet him. So I went over there and we had a chat. They're talking to several people, nothing real concrete yet, but they will be at the ICSC and nice group of people. We've exchanged contacts, so we're gonna be in contact trying to figure out what we can do with Kmart. And I will say, this is kinda, when the officer was there, he mentioned how it would make a great training site for our police department and our canines. And they said, here's the keys. And they basically turned over that whole facility until they fill it. And our officers can train in there and do active shooter, dogs, whatever they need to do to, to be ready. So I thought that was great. Just met them and they, they gave us the keys to the place, so a little shout out to them. And her name was, where is her name? Oh, Anna Malone and they're from Benderson Development, so I wanted to say thank you to her for that. Also, I sit on, I sit on a subcommittee for our, our sub-basin for the Sigma. Lamoore is part of the South Fourth Kings. So I sit on a group that's basically the sub-basin with all our partners. So we're just one of five GSAs that make up our sub-basin. So we're working on our plan. So we have one plan to bring forth to the state in January 2020. And things are going well. I think we're, we're tracking where we need to be. It's gonna get busy to finish the year and finish all the chapters on our plan, but we're about 51% of budget. And so we think we're gonna finish under budget, which is good. And that's it on that one. In early February, Chris Con reached out to me today. Congressman TJ Cox would like to come down for kind of a meet and greet and talk about the needs of the city of Lamoore. So we're looking to host TJ Cox and his staff sometime in the first part of February. So be on the lookout for that. That's coming up. And then lastly, we had a, a meeting last week. We kinda talked about rules of conduct a little bit and we were, there was a discussion about raising hands. And I will say, and I, I missed it, but we found it this week. In our rules of conduct under section B, General Conduct 1C, we have agreed that we would kinda give a little hand raise and wait for acknowledgement from the mayor to avoid, avoid the cross-talk. So the mayor would like to kinda practice, start using that tonight and then to gain the floor. So that's it for me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And if I may, when you raise your hand and acknowledge you, let that person talk. And when they're done talking, completely done talking, don't interrupt them. Let them, you have your hand up, I go to you next. That's all, okay? Now back to consent counter, section three. Approved minutes, regular meeting, December 18th, 2018. Three dash two, approved minutes, special meeting, January 8th, 2019. Three dash three, approval.
Three dash three, approval denial of claims for Ms. Lorna Donna. Three dash four, approval appointment and planning commissioner, Ms. Vanegas. Approval appoint, three dash five, approval appointment and parks and recreation commissioner, Ms. Vanegas. Three dash six, hold on just a minute. Three dash six, approval of SEQA for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Streets Project CIP fifty-ten Rivera. Three dash seven, approval certificate and acceptance, private road, public utilities and pedestrians easement from Darlene Neal revocable trust and tract eight thirty-nine Rivera. Three dash eight, approval tract nine twenty, resolution twenty nineteen oh one of intentions to I annex to include additional territories of public facilities, maintenance district number one and the City of Lamore. And I I levy in collections annual assessment of such annexed territories for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and thereafter Rivera. Okay, could I get a, uh, could I see if any of the council want to pull any items? Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'd like to please um pull items three dash one, two, three, six, seven, and eight. So all of them except for four and five.
Three dash one.
We don't have to talk about all of them, I just, I'm not voting yes, so that on all of them. We can go quickly, it's just because I'm not saying yes, that's all.
Okay, well, can I get a motion to approve the consent counter except three dash three, three dash seven, three dash eight, and three dash one and three, I guess, and three dash two?
Make the motion to approve three, four, and three, five as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, let's go to three dash one.
You can do this quickly, I'm just voting, I'm not just voting, uh, it's just not voting yes on all of them, that's all. So you just go.
Do you have questions?
You have a question on three?
No, I don't, I I just am.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve three, one as presented.
Okay.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Brown and second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Does the public want to expound on any consent counter? I can open it up to it. Okay. Let's go to three point two. If you guys go on, council on three point two, can you go to page twelve? Counsel. Any questions? I'm gonna open it to the public. Bring it back to the council. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Billingsley?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Brown, Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Uh, before I vote no, may I please have someone please reiterate what the motion was?
The motion was on three dash two.
I understand.
To approve.
Thank you. No.
Okay. And I vote aye. Motion carries. Three, three, approval denial of claims for Ms. Laura Donna. Do we, can we get some questions from the council on that or you want me open, let me open it to the public? The public want to come and expound on this one? Bring it back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve three, three as presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
I'm abstaining over ethical conflict.
And I vote aye. Three dash four.
That one's already approved, three, four, and three, five are approved, so three dash six.
Three dash six, approval of SEQA for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Streets Project CIP fifty-ten Rivera.
Ca- council, there is a additional, after standing. There is a resolution on this, I um, I believe that it's necessary to have a resolution on this matter. Um, I'm passing it to council now. Um, it's just a summary of the staff report and particulars with regards to each of the locations. Um, and I, there are copies for the public if they want them. So I would, I would propose that uh if council makes a motion on this item, that they approve the resolution that has been passed out.
And council, you know that's that's on page forty-five. Open it to the public? See, there's none. Back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Um, make a motion to approve resolution uh
Three dash six.
Uh, three, six, uh as was presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown?
Counsel, resolution.
The resolution provided to you was twenty nineteen oh two.
Twenty nineteen oh two, like to restate that to uh approve resolution twenty nineteen oh two as presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, can I get a second?
I'd like to second.
Got a second by Mr. Billingsley, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Before I vote, may I please be, I would like to please name what this is, just so everybody knows what we're voting on. It says, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lamore finding the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen street projects exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. And I'm voting no.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Motion pass. Three dash seven. Approval certification of acceptance, private road, public, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain from this one. Only only reason, I'm 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 gonna abstain because that's my parents and so.
That's your family?
Yeah. Yeah.
Item three dash seven is approval, it's a certificate of accept acceptance uh for private road, public utility, and pedestrian easement from Darlene Neal uh trust for tract eight three nine Rivera. Is there a motion to approve? Uh, item, oh, I'm sorry, can we open that to the public first? Nope, okay.
Maisha Neal, eight five one, East Cinnamon Drive, um mayor uh council members. The mayor had to excuse himself, as we know from that vote, Darlene Neal is his mother. That he may or may not be listed as part of the trust, so for ethical matters, he chose to excuse himself. Thank you.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question? What is your family's position on this?
Ms. Neal, uh Ms. Blair had a question for you. Would you mind approaching again?
I just want a clarification of your family's position, if you're um, what your family's position is for approval or not.
My family has in.
Can I ask that?
No, I I would, because there's a council member that has abstained for conflict, I would request council respect that and not get into his position, because that's, if she responds as to what he thinks, it's the same as him being here.
Okay, okay.
Seeing no other public comment, we'll bring it back to council for any questions.
No questions.
Seeing none, can I get an approval for item three dash seven?
I'll make a motion to approve three, seven as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons, second, item three dash seven is approved. Oh, I'm sorry.
And if I may, and if I may, he did state for approval, but that didn't, I'm I'm stating.
It's a motion.
Yes, it's just for the motion, not to approve the motion.
Correct.
I'm approving the motion, but I just want to make sure it's clear, because he asked, he, you made a mistake.
Yes, I asked for approval, I meant a motion, correct.
So I wanna, I'll restate that I want to make a motion to approve three, seven as presented.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It has been seconded by Councilmember Lyons.
Oh, I apologize, okay. Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Item three dash seven approved.
Three dash eight, approval tract nine twenty, resolution twenty nineteen oh one. The intentions to I annex that include additional territories and public facilities, maintenance district number one and the City of Lamore and I I levy of the collect annual assessment of such annexed territories for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and thereafter. Rivera?
Good evening, mayor, 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 members of council. Uh, we just um have a correction on page uh ninety-one, there's a typo. Instead of saying, stating zone eight, that should actually state zone nine. Uh, Janie has made corrections already and I think council, uh they have, you guys have copies.
Council's been provided a new copy as well as copies for the public if they need them.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Open it to the public, you're gonna expound on this, anybody? I see there's none, going back to the council. You guys want to discuss it or, okay, oh, can I get a vote, motion?
Make a motion to prove uh
Three dash eight.
Three dash eight as amended.
Mr. Brown, motion, can I get a second?
When you're referring to as amended, you mean resolution number twenty nineteen oh one?
Yes, uh as resolution number twenty nineteen oh one.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye, motion pass. Public hearing, section four. Report decision and or other council's actions will be taken. No public hearings, okay, going to new business, section five. Report discussion or council actions will be taken. Five dash one, report and recommendations, council members liaison appointment to regional boards and committees. Ms. Vanegas?
Good evening, mayor, council members. What you have before you is the boards and commission, the boards and committees. Every two years, council members are appointed to boards at different boards and committees. Every council member was provided an interest list and they did submit to me what their interest was. It was, lists were received from all council members with requested appointments based on primary, priority, apologize, for their primary appointment as well as their alternate appointment. I met with Mayor Protem Billingsley yesterday as Mayor Neal was unavailable. And the recommended list is, well, it was created and it's actually before you now. Appointments are evenly distributed between the four council members, as we do have one council member that is unable to sit on a board or committee. There are five financial con considerations, they are minimal. Although the appointments are voluntary, there are minimal costs associated with mileage reimbursement or any type of meal reimbursement if it's a dinner. Staff is recommending the approval of the lia, la, my goodness.
Liaison.
Liaisons to represent the city. Should there be interest in discussing and modifying the recommendation of the liaisons, now would be the appropriate opportunity.
If I may, my, Mrs. Vanegas, uh me and um Protem Billingsley, we we discussed this. And I wasn't gonna go and I just told him this would be good, get a sweat and and this. And so what I did is me and him talked about, discussed it, and so I allowed him to go. It wasn't that I wasn't able to go, I I wanted him to do it. We did some interviewing in here uh one night with people who was running for different seats as far as planning, as far as rec, parking wrecks. So just getting him to work, getting acclimated to doing this with me, you know, to team teamwork. Go ahead, sir.
So when, will these become effective immediately?
Correct.
Okay, we have a a potential conflict on Thursday night, there's a special board meeting for the South Fourth Kings Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Board. And if um Dave is not able to attend that meeting, we may not have a quorum to have that special meeting with public outreach, so I would request that Dave Brown be an alternate to the South Fourth Kings. Cause he can't be voted into the board yet.
Or at least, suggestion at least.
It's not, it's not on the agenda to have a board member. Sorry, the reason would be Chad Billingsley, although he would be available in a special meeting, there's not enough time to publicly notice the changing of the seat for the meeting that's happening on Thursday evening. Sorry for that. Or the other option is, is, I don't know if it's, it had talked to city attorney, but if it's, you know, postpone the appointment to that until after this meeting, after Thursday's meeting. There's a special meeting called, it'll be here at five thirty this Thursday.
Should council agree, that is something that can be done with that particular board or commission. It can be done to where the appointment is effective as of next week. We can do it as of Monday, the one, the first.
That would be the easiest route.
Can we get, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve uh item five dash one.
Mr. Billingsley, made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyons, second, Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion pass.
We're just done, council member comments.
Okay.
City council comments request.
City council comments request?
Uh, I have a um, is it my?
No, uh, first of all, uh, could I get some hands? Okay, could I get, uh, Mr. Billingsley, councilman request, do you have anything to say?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Brown?
I have nothing.
Ms. Blair?
Um, I have a, a letter that, uh, I would, I already, I let our city attorney know, I will be reading for my council comments, and, um, I already, it cleared with my attorney that could read it, so, um, it's a letter that will be addressed to you, Mr. Mayor, and it'll be emailed, um, from my, uh, city attorney, or from, not from the city attorney, I'm sorry, my personal attorney, not the city attorney, um, so...
Can you run that by me again, I could...
That, it, it will be emailed from my, my personal attorney to you and to the city attorney, this letter that I'm reading, but I just want it entered into the...
Okay.
...record. Um, Mayor Neal, I have grave concerns about what is going on with the city of Lamore's government and police department. As you know, in the wake of voting against the hiring of Lamore City Manager Nathan Olson around February of two thousand eighteen, I experienced being pulled over several times over a short period of time by either Lamore police officer or other unknown officers for what I and most people would consider trivial offenses. I was also followed several times but not pulled over, and the police were called on me on more than one occasions while I was dropping my children off at their schools. I found the sudden negative attention from the police very unsettling and suspicious, and considering I had no negative interactions with police in the nine-year periods prior, I took the issue privately with Lamore Police Chief Daryl Smith. Both the police chief and the council's reaction to my concerns was not to investigate, but instead to berate me publicly by holding a meeting to discuss my conduct in April of two thousand eighteen. Leading up to the meeting, on my conduct, defamatory lies about my interactions with local police asserting that I had a quote verbal altercation with the Lamore police were published in a local blog run by a friend of, at the time, the mayor, Ray Magricle. When I asked for dash cam or best cam videos of these supposed serious incidences, I was told by the city manager that there was no video, and he refused to provide me with any reports which may document other, uh, these encounters. At a later meeting, I asked about the nature of the relationship between city manager Nathan Olson and police chief Daryl Smith, I confirmed that there was a close relationship between him and the chief. Olson stated that their children were dating each other, I had heard from others in the community that their children were engaged, in other words, it is just a matter of time before they become in-laws. This close relationship is, in my opinion, a clear conflict of interest, and I publicly asked for an independent investigation into my experience with local law enforcement. Chief Smith responded by claiming at the meeting that if he lived in the, my district, he would recall me. Shortly thereafter, an effort to recall me was launched. During the recall lawsuit that was filed against me by the city clerk, I learned in the discovery process that at least one council member had used the city's email system to communicate with recall supporters and/or proponents. This is clearly improper and may very well be a violation of the California election laws. I was also subjected to obviously ridiculous employee complaints by two top members of Lamore Police Department. That first, from Chief Daryl Smith, charging me with ageism for using the term good old boys' network, which is a common idiom that has nothing to do with age. The second, from Margarita Ochoa, claiming I was threatening her by posting an Amazon review of a pen that doubles as a device to break a window in case of an emergency to my personal Twitter feed. I am concerned that these two complaints, which are, in my opinion, completely baseless and submitted only to harass me, will likely land the officers on the Brady List intentionally filing false complaints, especially by police officers, is a serious matter. The aforementioned behavior of city manager Nathan Olson, police chief Daryl Smith, and Commander Ochoa painted disturbing picture of abuse of power in the city of Lamore. It is clear to any reasonable observer that this entire set affair was instigated and encouraged by former council member, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Magricle at the time. Happily, the voters took care of Mr. Magricle, but the voters have no say in high-ranking government employees. Managers or department heads in the city of Lamore must meet the highest professional and ethical standards. Unlike Mr. Magricle, he can't look to the voters to clean house. Therefore, I'm requesting a formal and thorough investigation into the following questions, and there are five. One, did any city employee or elected official utilize city resources to include the email system to engage in political, to include it in the recall activity during the past twelve months? Are Mr. Olson and Mr. Smith in fact in a conflict of interest because of a family relationship or expected family relationship? Three, are there any city policies that would prohibit family members such as in-laws from directly supervising each other's work? If there are no such policies in place, should there be? Four, are the citizen complaint process for the police department meeting the most modern industry standards for timeliness and thoroughness of investigation reviews? Should an independent police review board or auditor be created, such as those in effect in Fresno, Palo Alto, San Jose, and the like? Has the police department implemented the new public records disclosure laws pertaining to the officer misconduct that just went into effect? That was question number five. I am confident that you will choose to do the right thing and initiate an investigation into all of the items I've lifted, listed above. Thank you, respectfully, council member, Holly Ann Tredy Blair, thank you.
Are you, you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I just wanna s...
They're all done?
They're all done.
You didn't, they asked, he asked?
Yeah.
You want that one?
Yeah. It's okay. I just wanna say, uh, to the city council as well, let, first I wanna address my community, you guys did an absolute superb job by holding yourselves together in times where I seen people blur out from, to the left, to the right, and it really, it really does me good to see, uh, this town has class, and, um, I thank our fire department for being here, our chief, um, you know, all of us, we, we live in a safe haven, great place, lived here all my life, and I tell you what, going back to the city council, I wanna let you guys know, that was a class act today, and keep it up, if you guys know what I'm talking about, all right? It's now eight-thirty, we're now adjourned.